All right, our first order of business is our presentations of the Local Hero Awards. And I think that's going to be conducted by Counselor Valco.
The highlight of our year, every year when we do the Local Heroes, so I'd like to welcome everybody here. Local Heroes are people who have made outstanding contributions to our community's well-being. Tonight, eight individuals will be recognized for their significant accomplishments and the positive impacts they've made on the city and the citizens of Burnaby. 2015 marks the 19th year the city has recognized its local heroes. The total number of local heroes in Burnaby, including the people being recognized this evening, now stands at 251. For a population of 230,000, that's a pretty elite group. Local Heroes represent an impressive cross-section of Burnaby citizens. At this time, I'd like to thank our schools, libraries, recreation centers, and community agencies for helping to spread the word about the program. I'd also like to extend a special thank you to the people who took the time and initiative to put together nomination submissions this year. Without the efforts of the nominators, the Local Heroes Award Program would not be the success that it is today. I'd now like to call upon Mayor Corrigan to join me in making the presentations to this year's Local Heroes. As your name is called, I invite each local hero to come forward to receive your certificate of recognition and to have your photograph taken with the mayor. And our first local hero this evening, George Doring. For nearly two decades, George has been a community advocate and volunteer. George was an active member of the New Vista Society Executive Board for 18 years, working to ensure that the society's housing was progressive and enriched the lives of its residents. He also organizes and teaches workshops on seniors' health and well-being through the Council of Senior Citizens Organizations of B.C. For the past decade, George has also volunteered for the Office of Raj Shohan at many community events, providing information and assistance to community members. As George's nominators write, George has been a tireless advocate and volunteer all his life. He's been an instrumental member of the Burnaby Edmonds Community. George Doring. I'll just deviate briefly from the script that I have in regards to all our nominees, but in George's case in particular. I know that all our nominees this evening have done great work, but in most cases, it's the spouses that are at home that also assist in the work that is done by our nominees. And I wanted to acknowledge George's wife, Trudy. And Trudy has also, I know, assisted George in a lot of things over the years. George and I were speaking just before, I read what I was going to say about George, and George said, "Well, that covers about half of it." And I said to George, "Well, if we had everything that all the nominees have done over the years, we'd be here all night." So we had to cut it a little short, George and I apologize for that. Our second nominee is Janice Froze. Janice? For over two decades, Janice has been engaged in community development and education activities with several organizations in Burnaby. As a member of the Rotary Club of Burnaby Deer Lake, Janice has been actively involved in youth capacity building through her work with the Interact Clubs at Burnaby South and Burnaby Central Secondary Schools, the Rotary Youth Exchange, and the Burnaby Rotary Act Club, assisting youth with planning and implementing community projects. She also coordinates the Burnaby Boots for Kids Program, which distributes new boots to children to ensure that those in need are prepared for the cold winter months. Through the Burnaby Neighborhood House, Janice also volunteers as a literacy tutor and sits on the Neighborhood Small Grants Committee, a program that seeks to connect and engage residents within their community. As Janice's nominators describe, her work has quietly gone unrecognized until now. She is a caring individual with a passion for making a difference in her city and in the world. Janice Froze. Our next nominee, Aliya Jiwa. Aliya? Aliya has been an active volunteer for over five years with the Burnaby Art Gallery, where she inspires young artists and assists instructors in producing quality art instruction. Aliya helps with material preparation, program setup and cleanup, and provides individual assistance to students during workshops. Aliya's enthusiasm for community engagement is shown in her work with the organization Apathy is Boring, where she is part of a volunteer street team that visits music festivals and community events to encourage youth to vote and get involved in their community, including registering people to vote. As Aliya's nominators write, always a friendly face, she has shown herself to be dependable in all types of situations and often spots needs or problems before they arise. She has been a thoughtful and energetic addition to the team. Aliya Jiwa. Our next local hero, Maureen Kirk. Maureen has been dedicated to enhancing the lives of seniors in Burnaby for over 18 years through her volunteerism with Citizen Support Services. Since 1997, Maureen has been a dedicated volunteer visitor for several local seniors, building meaningful relationships with each of her clients. She also became involved as a volunteer driver for the South Lunch Program and the Gadda Boats Bus Outings Program, as well as being a weekly shopping buddy. They always get in my way at the IGA. As Maureen's nominators state, Maureen is a generous and kind-hearted person who takes great pleasure in assisting others. She is an invaluable member of our team, whose mission is to support Burnaby citizens in health and independent living. Maureen Kirk. Our next local hero, Lindy McQueen. Lindy is a tireless volunteer who has dedicated her time and energy to several organizations in the community in which she grew up. Lindy's volunteerism spans a breadth of activities, from welcoming new congregation members at the Gordon Presbyterian Church, to organizing community events, to delivering education and awareness about public safety and local foods. Most recently, Lindy founded the Edmonds People and Residents Association, which provides opportunities for neighbors to get to know each other and work together on a variety of community projects. As Lindy's nominators write, Lindy is interested in people, in her neighbors, and in helping people be part of their own community and enjoying the best of Burnaby. Lindy McQueen. Our next local hero, Heather Padro. Heather has been a dedicated volunteer for 13 years, working with palliative care patients and their families, as well as being a docent at the Burnaby Art Gallery. In addition to supporting palliative care patients at the George Derby Center, Heather also focused on connecting with residents and veterans who had few or no family visits. As a docent, Heather has delivered quality school programming, as well as assisting with exhibition openings. As Heather's nominators describe, she has a calm and kind presence which many are drawn to. She is a compassionate person to the ninth degree. There seems to be no one person that she wouldn't hesitate to move towards helping. Heather Padro. Our next local hero, Claire Stegan. Claire has been an active volunteer in Burnaby throughout her adult life. Since 2004, she has volunteered countless hours with the Deer Lake United Church, doing a variety of activities, including organizing the preparation of lunches for people who are homeless, organizing children's camps, and fundraising to provide food and programming at the Burnaby Youth Hub. As Claire's nominators state, Claire is truly one who constantly is working for others in her kind, gentle way. She is a role model for everyone involved in the community, always working to make our community a better place. Claire Stegan. And last but not least, because this list was alphabetical, and I know how that works, you're always at the bottom of whatever list, Tony Wong. For over a decade, Tony has been a vital part of the Alpha and Spurling Parent Advisory Committees, filling various roles during this time. At Alpha, he took over the role of treasurer and spearheaded numerous fundraising efforts for the school, while assisting with each year's dry grad committee and judging science fair exhibitions. Tony has also served as the Chair of the District One Community Policing Advisory Committee for over seven years. He volunteers at the community policing office and community events to raise awareness about public safety and crime prevention. He also served on the mayor's task force on graffiti. As Tony's nominators describe, his gentle, approachable demeanor makes him an amazing addition to our PAC and Alpha community. Both in and beyond the school environment, in a very quiet and understated way, Tony has made and continues to make many valuable contributions to community well-being in Burnaby. Tony Wong.
Well, thank you very much, Counselor Valco, for going through all of those local heroes. I know that we only touched on a portion of the activities that are taken on by those local heroes, but time constraints didn't allow us to be able to go into all of the details. And in many of the cases, I think what you heard was they were quiet and unassuming, that they were humble, that they were unrecognized. Well, I can tell you, tonight was an opportunity to recognize what so many of their friends in the community know, that they are very, very special people who continue to give back on an ongoing basis to those around them, and that is the greatest gift, the gift of your time, that people consistently in our community do as part of their everyday life. And I know, I've got Raj Shohan here today, who is going to be representing our MLAs. I know my wife is over in Victoria, and so is Jane Shin, MLA for Burnaby Lowheed, and I understand that Richard Lee is now the Deputy Speaker, so he's over there working very hard. I don't know how you got off, Raj, you seem to... But, seniority. It's very nice that you could be here, and I know there is a certificate later that he'll be making a presentation outside. I wanted to add, though, on behalf of council and the staff of the city, that we could never do all of the various tasks that are necessary to make a complete and compassionate community. It requires volunteers, people who step up and give of themselves. And one of the things about Burnaby, I think, that has made us the very special place in the world, is that we consistently have one of the highest degrees of volunteerism anywhere in the country. We have people here who are consistently giving of themselves to ensure that others have a little better life. And those local heroes, you really represent tonight hundreds of people out there, thousands of people in our community, who give back each and every day in quiet ways. And so, when we recognize you, we're not only recognizing you as an individual, but we're recognizing all of those local heroes that make Burnaby such a great place to live and work and play. So tonight, it's an opportunity for us on council and for your friends and colleagues in the community to say thank you to you, and then to encourage you to keep up the good work, because I know that people like you will just keep giving throughout your life. So tonight, we're here to honor you, and then tomorrow, you get back to making Burnaby a great place. So, thank you very much, everyone. Now, we're going to continue with the council business, and you're certainly invited to stay as we go through the very exciting council agenda that we have. Or, for those of you who really must leave to get home and see American Idol, we will take just a brief break, so that you can clear out, and there's some certificate awards to be provided by Raj Shohan, and I bet you there's lots more pictures to be taken. So thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. All right. Thank you, Counselor McNell. And we have some proclamations for tonight. The first proclamation from the Office of the Mayor of the City of Burnaby is Homelessness Action Week. Whereas every day in our municipality there are men, women, seniors, youth, and children who do not have a place to call home, and whereas community action and participation are essential in addressing and eliminating issues and circumstances that contribute to homelessness, and whereas during this week, activities and events will be offered, and the community will be encouraged to learn about the many issues related to homelessness, the community and government agencies that offer services and support that work for persons who are homeless, and what each of us as citizens can do to creatively and collectively address homelessness in our communities. Now therefore, I, Derek Corrigan, Mayor of Burnaby, to hereby proclaim the week of October 11th to 17th, 2015, as Homelessness Action Week in the City of Burnaby. The next proclamation is Manufacturing Month. Counselor Johnson.
Your worship, whereas manufacturing makes a significant contribution to British Columbia's economy and the prosperity of its citizens, and whereas Burnaby is home to over 250 manufacturers, with many leading innovations in sectors such as electronic products, food manufacturing, wood products, and whereas manufacturing is the third-largest employer in British Columbia and provides honorable and well-paying, high-skilled employment opportunities with wages that are 15 percent higher than the national average, the manufacturing sector pays annually an estimated $8.4 billion in wages. Every manufacturing job created leads to almost three new jobs in total, and whereas Canadian manufacturers and exporters is the country's leading trade and industry association, serving as the voice of 10,000 leading companies. In partnership with the Alliance for Manufacturing in B.C., and partner organizations like the Burnaby Board of Trade, business associations, municipal and provincial governments, are presenting an intense calendar of events, industry tours, workshops, and student initiatives, including the B.C. Manufacturing Hall of Fame Awards and a rolling fair through the month of October to heighten the profile of manufacturing and to reinforce that manufacturing professions and skilled trade occupations are inspiring and rewarding careers. And whereas it is important to remember manufacturing matters, everything each citizen encounters or consumes on a daily basis came from a manufacturer. And therefore, yourself, Mayor Derek Corrigan, Mayor of Burnaby, does hereby proclaim October 2015 as Manufacturing Month in the City of Burnaby.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. The next proclamation in regard to World Mental Health Day is read by Counselor Jordan.
Thank you, your worship. A proclamation, World Mental Health Day. Whereas World Mental Health Day is an education and awareness campaign designed to encourage people to talk, reflect, and engage with others on the importance of mental health and the reality of mental illness, and whereas nearly one in five Canadians will suffer a mental disorder in their lives, the remaining four Canadians will be affected by a mental illness through a family member, friend, or coworker. And whereas of the 10 leading causes of disability worldwide, five are mental disorders: major depression, schizophrenia, bipolar disorder, substance abuse disorders, and obsessive-compulsive disorder. And 30 to 40 percent of disability claims are for depression. And whereas stigma is the number-one reason people do not seek or receive treatment, and whereas mental health literacy and education are vital in the prevention, so early recognition will help reduce the severity of this disorder. Now therefore, I, Derek R. Corrigan, Mayor of Burnaby, does hereby proclaim October 10th, 2015, as World Mental Health Day in the City of Burnaby, and urge all citizens to cooperate enthusiastically in supporting the efforts of this organization and encourage the public to learn more about this disability. Signed, Mayor Corrigan, dated October 5th. And I do believe, Mayor Corrigan, you have a framed proclamation to present to Ms. Todd and Ms. O'Neill that are supposed to be here with us tonight?
I think Ms. Carol Todd and Ms. Sherri O'Neill are here tonight, is that right? I'll come down and give you a copy of this.
Thank you. It's okay. Ah, another photo.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, you may not know this, but in my job as a director at Blue Cross and committee member of our charitable foundation, because of the type of things mentioned in this particular proclamation or in the issues around mental illness, over half of the charitable work that Blue Cross does is directed and focused through the Canadian Mental Health Association for the issues that we're talking about here tonight. So we're very proud of that work and proud of the work that these associations does.
Thank you, Counselor Jordan, and I agree, is that I think it's so critically important that it is no longer something that is kept a secret, that in fact, we do talk about mental health issues and addressing mental health issues and how we can help those who are suffering from the various kinds of disorders we were reading about in the proclamation. They certainly have a significant impact on our society, on the health of family members and people around them, on the economy. It's an important issue to be dealt with, and the first step is always about ensuring that people get help as quickly as possible and feel comfortable in obtaining that help and disclosing that they're having difficulties. And I think if we can do anything as a council to make sure that people understand that message, we're happy to do so. So thank you very much for being with us tonight. All right, we'll move on to the next item of business, which is minutes. And I would like a motion to adopt the minutes of the open council meeting held on September 28th, 2015. It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. Motion to adopt the minutes of the public hearing held on September 29th, 2015. It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. And thank you very much, Counselor Valco, for sitting in for me for those meetings. Greatly appreciated. I hear that you did an absolutely wonderful job, so... It is, it's still functioning, and I really appreciate it. Reports, motion resolved into a committee of the whole.
Standing in the motion.
All those in favor, opposed, and carried. And the first committee report is one that I've just received, I've only just arrived back in town, and this is in regard to small cell antenna installations. I need some time to be able to have a look at this and ask some questions of staff. Motion to table it. It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. The next report is from the Social Planning Committee, you're the Chair, Counselor Valco, please.
I, your worship, and this is in regards to the Social Sustainability Strategy, and this is a Phase One progress report on the actions. And on behalf of the committee, I would move the two recommendations. And very briefly, your worship, four years ago in July of 2011, council endorsed the Burnaby Social Sustainability Strategy, and this was a plan that's intended to guide the city's plans and resource allocations in the social realm over the next decade. This is the third part of our strategies in regards to the economic strategy and also the environmental strategy. The strategy was developed by a steering committee chaired by yourself and composed of 24 Burnaby residents, including four members of city council, following an extensive public consultation process. The strategy, which included seven strategic priorities and 127 associated actions for the city, and others acting within their respective mandates or in collaboration to move Burnaby forwards towards its social sustainability vision and goals. Substantial progress has been made on 35 out of the 44 actions identified in the Phase One Implementation Plan, while many of the strategy's actions identified as ongoing or enacted as opportunities arise have continued to be advanced. In addition, opportunities have arisen to make progress on a number of the actions identified for Phase Two Implementation. So in total, significant progress has been made on 81 out of the strategy's 127 actions. City and its partners have made significant progress on 35 of the 44 actions contained in the Phase One Implementation of the Burnaby Social Sustainability, and indeed, conditions have been favorable for progress on 81 out of a total of 127. So we've got 46 left to go, and I know the committee's working hard on achieving completion of all of the intended actions. So that's my report, your worship, and I would just, I know the hundreds of thousands of viewers out there in Shawland, I would encourage them to, if they have an opportunity, to either go to the city's website or come into City Hall and pick up a copy of the progress report, and it's an excellent report, our staff, this is far more comprehensive than what we have as a report here, but I would really encourage people to either access the website or come in, as I say, and pick up a copy of this report at City Hall.
Thank you. Counselor McNell.
Thank you, your worship. As part of the original steering committee on this, it's great to see this report and how much we accomplished. I know there was a lot of work went into it and a lot of planning by a lot of people, a lot of feedback from the public, so we've covered it all off. But you don't realize exactly how much you've accomplished until you see a report like this, and I want to commend staff for what they've done, because it just highlights all the things we've done, and when you start looking at the three pages here of the things we've done, it really brings it home. And I'd just like to maybe mention a couple of them, is on Meeting the Basic Needs was one of them, and we announced that we partnered up with the school... up with the school board and that to create up to 500 new spaces for childcare. There was a program started with, in conjunction with the Board of Trade for post-secondary students, and over 100 post-secondary students have been mentored to the Board of Trade as they go into the workforce. 8,600 residents received assistance so they could use our recreation facilities where there's charges and that. We do have a lot of people that below the poverty line are at it, and the city put in about $1.5 million to help that. We've got 1.32 million of our housing fund, which is support, affordable housing and various things that we've done. 433 adaptable housing units secured since 2013, and 154 new secondary suites. And we're continuing to work on that with our people in the community that have suites and that, to get them legalized, to take some of the pressure off. The diversity part of it, we had a lot of work there. We had 27,000 hours contributed by volunteers to support isolated seniors, and we had over 43,000 visits to our youth centers. And then we said, we started a program last year to get involved in that, and it showed in the last election where we had a 5.6 percent increase in the municipal election. And we've had over 50 tours of city halls, and people understand how their local government works and what's there available for them and where they can go to get help when they need it. The Board of Trade launched their award-winning Pledge for Sustainable Community. I'd just like to comment, they were in the finalists for the world competition for Boards of Trade and chambers of commerce and that. They're one of the top four in the world that got recognized for that. They didn't win it, but just to be recognized out of all those countries in the world, I think that itself speaks volumes to what our Board of Trade have been doing with the partnership with us. And there's many more things, and I know we have other speakers and that, so I'll leave some of the other highlights to our other speakers at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor King.
Thank you, your worship. I would like to echo both counselors previously. I was also one of the counselors who sat on this sustainability strategy, and it was just a breathtaking discussion to listen to the communities come together, people from different walks of life contributing and making us see the whole picture of what Burnaby really is about. Some of the things that I would like to highlight that I'm very proud of, and also that's also in the planning progress, is celebrating diversity and culture. One of the things I was involved with is encouraging the newcomers train as storytellers in our Burnaby Public Library. And I've seen many, many of those storytelling projects. They could be about culture, or how they integrate, or how things are same or different, and how they celebrate diversity. And this is one thing that I would like to promote everyone to go and see. Some of the stories are actually published on our Burnaby Public Library website, so I encourage everyone to go see that. Getting involved, sometimes I have people asking me, well, what is in City Hall? What's going on there? And I'm so happy to see that there were 50 City Hall tours, which engaged over 1,000 residents. So that's what City Hall is about, if you like to have a city tour, maybe talk to our clerks. And oftentimes, because I'm the youth rep, I have youth emailing me, asking me what volunteer opportunities are, and I would send them to Ms. Waller. But now we have a new website, and it's filled with lots of different opportunities, from summer camps all the way to senior centers. And this is just a wonderful website that engages and gets everyone involved. As a school teacher and also in the catchment of Burn Creek Secondary, I am so proud to say that Burn Creek Secondary is our eighth Burnaby community school, and that was, that started in 2015. And also getting the community involved, maybe a lot of community participants don't know, but we have something called Festival Burnaby Grant, and this year we had 28, actually annually, we have 28 grants. And this just brings out the neighborhood to come and meet each other. So this is some of few things I'm really, really proud of that we're doing and will continue to do. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor King. Counselor Jordan.
Thank you, your worship. As you know, I wasn't on the committee. I wasn't very happy that I wasn't on the committee, but at the time, and when we finally got the report, I was thinking that, wow, that is really ambitious, and wondering whether we could actually possibly accomplish all of the things that were in this report. And now, when you look back, how quickly time flies, that was 2011 was finally, that it was finally, all the pieces came together. But again, I was looking over this today and reading the highlight summary page and going, wow, we really have done a lot over these past few four years. And until you see, you know, these kinds of reports, sometimes you sort of forget about that and how it all kind of fits together into a long-term strategy for social sustainability. Maybe that's why I wasn't on the committee, because I couldn't ever pronounce it. But I'm really impressed with the work that our staff, again, the committees, volunteers, and everybody have done towards this. And the only thing I wonder is, since there were so many people engaged in putting this thing together in the first place, are they going to get a copy of this book or at least some notification that it's available? Because I know there were hundreds of people engaged in the processes, and I'm sure they would, you know, want to know what's happened in the meantime, so might be an opportunity.
We've covered just about every official organization, and to be fair, I'm not sure about, you're asking about the various people that may have tangentially participated in the production of this report. I would, I defer to Mr. Pelche on that.
Worship, we can take that on as staff. I think we still have a mailing list from the process. Some of the addresses might not be currently up to date, but we've got a letter and direct them towards the website to access the report.
Yeah, maybe a letter to them saying that the link is available, not necessarily give out more paper, but, you know, that if they're interested, they could go and see an update. Because I know a lot of people put their heart and soul into this and really worked hard on it over time, so I'm sure they'd be encouraged by what's been accomplished today.
Why don't we send a copy of the report to the members of the committee that were involved, and then we'll also send a link to the people that are on the mailing list to give them access via the website. But I think the people who are on the committee would love to have, this is a beautiful report, and I think they'd love to have this as part of the record of the proceedings, and it's really quite complete. Counselor King.
Just on the same note, Counselor Jordan, I believe that staff perhaps is working just on 4.0, the communication strategy. I think a highlight or synopsis of the guidebook would be coming out. Is that the same book we're talking about, or maybe something else is coming out? Okay, sorry, thank you.
And just in closing, your worship. I'd be remiss in not mentioning that, as I said earlier on, the strategy started in July of 2011, and Counselor McEnell, in his role as the past chair of the Social Planning Committee, I know took a great interest and devoted a lot of his time in putting together what we see here tonight, so I would like to thank Counselor McEnell for all the work he put in over the last four years.
Thank you. And Mr. Moncur, I would particularly like to single out the Planning Department and the social planning wing of the Planning Department for the work they've done on this. You know, we can go out into the community and we can work on setting a vision and developing policy, but the implementation comes down to our dedicated staff and whether they're committed to the plan. And as you can tell, they've been implementing this on a step-by-step basis and using every opportunity they could to measure what they did against our social sustainability plan, and we really appreciate that, Mr. Pelche, is that please pass on the congratulations of council to our planners and to all of the other departments that have been working with our Social Planning Department to make this happen, because many of these tasks are taken on by other departments within the city, including Parks and Recreation and others who are doing very good work out there. And it, you know, the thing I said when these reports come through, it becomes a part of the city's dynamic, and as a result, everything is measured against these strategies that are put in place. So all that work that citizens did by participating on the committee and by participating in the consultation process comes to fruition on an ongoing basis as our staff implements this and measures against it. And that's the reality of these plans and how important they are. I wish other orders of government would do the same thing, that they would put in plans that we could relate to and understand, and then measure themselves as to whether they accomplish what they've told the public they will accomplish. Because too often, what they do is reactive and not proactive, and this really is the way that you begin to implement plans that take us into the future in a way that I think addresses community concerns meaningfully. And this was, after all, a product of our community and their goals and ambitions. I think that's something to be very proud of, and to all of those members of the committee, this is the work that you did coming into practice. All right, with that, are you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. All right, moving on to the city manager's report. Item one is exemptions from taxation for 2016, my least favorite report. Been moved and seconded, and these are all the organizations who are exempt from taxes for this year. Ready, oh, Counselor Jordan.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to point out and recognize again in line of the previous report, last week, we passed the new lease rates for our community resource centers, and council recognized that basically the city is giving a contribution to the value of around a quarter of a million dollars by providing a lower lease rate to the agencies, some of which were recognized here tonight for their work in the community, by giving them lower lease rate, but also we give them exemption from taxation. So that also contributes substantially to their ability to provide services in the community. So it's not even just the dollar value of the reduced lease that they pay, we also have, contribute this towards assisting them in their work. So there's eight different agencies that are impacted by that, as is reported in this.
And I'm only teasing when I say it's my least favorite report, is that I recognize, in fact, that all of the agencies who are receiving tax exemptions are given those tax exemptions on the basis that they are providing important public services and that the work that they do is worthy of exempting them from taxes. And that means all of these organizations, but also all of the churches. And churches have an obligation to contribute on an ongoing basis to our society in ensuring the betterment of the population of our city. And it's something that some take on in a very effective way, and I hope that all recognize that part of their obligation to the city is to ensure that for that exemption from taxes, that they contribute to the benefit of the city.
Eighty churches.
Right. Counselor Johnson.
I disagree with, I totally agree with what you just stated. I think that it's a real process that we can assist some of the organizations that are assisting our community with very intricate needs that we as a city wouldn't necessarily be able to address. And that's not just the religious ones, there's other organizations here such as St. Leonard's Youth and Family Services and the NEK Center and other organizations like this. I think the, it's small, I mean, it's big dollars in the budget, but it's small dollars in relation to the services that we may have to, or other governments may have to fork out if these services weren't available. I think some organizations contribute way, way more than others do, but seeing that, I think we should be encouraging them all to be fully participate in our community.
That's the objective. All right, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. And item two on the report is to provide council with information regarding provincial changes to the municipal and regional district tax. Been moved and seconded. Counselor Daliwah.
Thank you, your worship. I just have a quick comment on this report. It's pretty straightforward, it doesn't affect Burnaby's tourism. Burnaby has decided not to go to 3 percent. But the comment I wanted to make, your worship, is, which is captured in this report, but it hasn't mentioned how much of this money, the additional percentage. Now, as of September 1, local governments can now raise hotel tax, previously also known this one as hotel tax, from 2 percent to 3 percent. And Burnaby is staying with 2 percent, and that's a choice, and I believe that's what they're comfortable with. But for those who want to go to 3 percent, your worship, the provincial government's knocked in a cut of that, a 20 percent of the additional percentage that the local government will charge from the hotels would go into a provincial coffers, sort of a slush fund for the region, the so-called, that what you would have announcements, some things that is happening, which would promote tourism. In other words, this is going back to sort of a way to download down to local governments and to the patterns of hotels. Previously was funded through government's funding. All the tourism funding is probably gone now, so this is one way to fund the activities that will be sort of named and used or held in the name of tourism. So that is, that's new, it's not the 20 percent of the other 2 percent, but if you used to go to 3 percent, 30 percent will go to provincial government. UBCM raised concerns over that because this wasn't something discussed with the local government, that, and there wasn't a huge amount of consultation that took place on this issue, whether this 20 percent cut was reasonable or why was this, there's not much explanation on that. Also, the report notes that, which again, is increasing a lot of red tape. This is now on an annual basis, regardless of whether you go from 2 to 3 percent, all local governments that currently have hotel tax would be required to have additional reporting that and put annual plans and all that stuff. I guess those are the kind of things that the government is doing based on perhaps some feedback lobbying of some of the other people who want to do their own stuff, and now government's making it a little difficult for local government, or local organizations in this case, to really be taking the same kind of previous initiatives that they were able to take. So a more thorough reporting, probably in the name of, it's the name of transparency, but it is more so to really watch it, to see what the things of the local tourism are doing, and then perhaps give that money to other organizations who seem to be wanting a part of that additional funding. So this was something that, again, the government, in a way, reducing their own provincial government, reducing their own direct responsibility to support the local governments for tourism, and now completely left to the local government to make it.
Thank you. And I think, you know, the model that we chose to implement here in Burnaby was probably one of the most respectful models of our tourism industry and the hoteliers who were going to have this tax imposed, and they agreed to the tax and cooperated in ensuring that we were collecting the tax because we ensured there was an arms-length organization that was able to utilize that money to benefit the very hotels that were contributing that tax. And it's worked extremely well in the city of Burnaby, and I think this is a reflection of that in the sense that the group has said, look, we're using the money effectively, we're not going to grab for another 1 percent. We would, we think we can accomplish what we need to accomplish with the monies that are available. And I respect that. That's them looking at how their organization functions, and it functions effectively. And though we participate in it and make sure that it's financially responsible and have our representation on the Tourism Board, we continue to provide the majority of the decision-making to the members of the tourism organization. I think it's worked extremely well in our city. Counselor McEnell. Counselor McEnell.
Thank you, worship. I echo what Counselor Daliwak said about the provincial government and how they advocated their responsibility for tourism for B.C. in general. But I'm the representative on the Tourism Burnaby Board now, and there wasn't a lot of consultation on this. They've mentioned they were looking at it, and then they came out with it, and we looked at it and said that the way we operate and we run a fairly tight ship there with not very many employees, that we just felt that it wasn't the right time to be increasing taxes on hotels. I mean, the dollar did a lot to help tourism. Tourism's up all over the province because of the difference in the dollar this year. But still, when you say it's only 1%, but when you add a 2% tax, that's a 50% tax increase. So the tourism board, we just said that it wasn't warranted at the time for us. So, and I know in Vancouver, for example, with the new convention center with everything they went through there and that, and the government taking all the credit for the funding they put in, but the hotel tax jumped to 10% there to help pay off that cost for that convention center that they're bringing all these big conventions in for. So it is kind of onerous on them, and it's just another case of how you download the stuff and how you work the numbers to get where you're at. So anyway, as Burnaby, I think we run a pretty tight ship there. It's a good relationship between the city and the tourism board, and they're doing a good job, and they're very mindful of the dollar. So that's why we decided not to increase it to 3%.
Great. And with that, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Motion the committee rise and report.
Go move.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Motion to report of the committee be adopted.
Go move.
All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Moving on to bylaws, Counselor Balco.
Thank you, your worship. Before I read the, on the first reading, bylaw number 13519, that will be deferred until such time as the report on the small antennas that we tabled earlier on in the meeting comes back to council. So for first reading, I would move that bylaw numbered 13518.
Want to table it?
I want to table it.
All right. So just proceed with A.
So on first reading, I would move that bylaw numbered 13518 be now introduced for first time.
Second. Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carried.
And again, your worship, on bylaw 13498, this will be deferred also until such time as the small antenna report that we tabled earlier on in the meeting comes back to council. So for first, second, and third reading, I would move that bylaws numbered 13520, 13521, and 13522 be now introduced and read three times.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carried.
For second reading, I would move that bylaws numbered 13503 and 13504 be now introduced and read a second time.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, and carried.
For third reading, reconsideration and final adoption, I would move that bylaw numbered 13443 be now read a third time, reconsidered, finally adopted, signed by the mayor and clerk, and the corporate seal affixed there, too.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, and carried.
And for reconsideration and final adoption, I would move that bylaws numbered 13433 and 13517 be now reconsidered, finally adopted, signed by the mayor and clerk, and the corporate seal affixed there, too.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. New business. Counselor Balco.
Thanks, your worship. Your worship on the new business, I would move that Counselor Dan Johnson be authorized to be the city's official representative to attend the 2015 International Association for Sports and Leisure Facilities Architectural Awards Presentation Ceremony. Boy, that's a mouthful, eh?
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Bye, Counselor Johnson.
Jaule.
Yep, practice up your German. All right, any other new business? Seeing none, a motion, new journey?
I got one.
Oh, Counselor McEnell.
Yes, thank you, worship. The, a year ago, just over a year ago, the city went into a partnership for healthy community, partnership with Fraser Health and the community and that, and we started a steering committee, which I chair, and then two subcommittees. And I chair one, which is the mental health in youth. And when we looked at the whole problem and that, it's such a huge problem, we thought that the best way, most we could accomplish would be to start when they're very young, when they're having problems, and see if we can head it off there, rather than treat the problem after it develops into a real serious problem and that. So we have a workshop with all the stakeholders coming together on Friday over the Chadwell Center and that, and Fraser Health will be in attendance in that, the school district and all the stakeholders that work with youth in trouble, especially in the mental health issues. So we're making some fairly good progress there, and I'll report back. So far, we, it hasn't cost the city anything. We applied for a grant, we got a small grant of $10,000, and that's funding the committee and they should fund it right through to the final report. Just wanted to bring an update.
Thank you very much, Counselor McEnell. Is there anything else? Secondary, please. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Thank you to everyone who is with us tonight, and thank you to staff, and thank you, council.